So.
Yeah?
Yeah.
So.
All right, welcome everybody to September 27th Orsted Consortium Meeting. Everybody's present? Uh, seven oh five, yeah?
Yes.
It is. All right, public hearing, Brad, you read it, please?
Yep. Public notice is hereby given in conformity with the requirement of public, general public law of the Town of Westpylston, Article 23, public hearing and notice that the Board of Selectmen will meet on Wednesday, September 27, 2017, at 7:00 PM, 2:05 PM for the purpose of considering adopting a fuel efficiency vehicle policy. The meeting will be held in the Selectmen's Meeting Room Number 210 of the Municipal Office Building, 140 Oster, Oster Street, Westpylston.
Neil?
Okay, thank you. So, we're putting this before the Board tonight. We've discussed this as being one of the necessary action items we have to complete to meet the five criteria to make us eligible to apply for the Green Community status. And the five criteria just briefly include, you know, some land use, siting, zoning type issues. We need to do some fuel, um, energy efficiency projects at various town buildings, which we're finalizing that list as we speak. We need to do this fuel efficiency policy to commit to buying fuel-efficient vehicles. And then we also, at town meeting, will be asking the voters to adopt a stretch code, which is energy efficiency requirements within new construction. So tonight's fuel-efficient vehicle policy basically just says that we agree that we will move ahead and purchase fuel-efficient vehicles. The, the good news on this is that the policy does allow for exemptions for a number of different types of vehicles, of which almost all of the vehicles in our combined fleet between town and school are exempt. All public safety, emergency response vehicles are exempt. All heavy-duty trucks with DPW are exempt. The certain school vans and such are exempt. We literally only have four vehicles in our combined vehicle inventory list right now that are not exempt. And based on the mile per gallon that we would be obligated to look at, the MPG for any new vehicle, it will be very easy to meet that criteria when we go to purchase those new vehicles. So, it really, it is not any additional cost to the town to comply with this, and I'm asking the Board to vote to adopt this policy.
So, one question is the, the new vehicle we're going to purchase for DPW, is that fall under this?
So, yep, because, um, under the, under the standards, um, any four-wheel, four-wheel drive pickup truck would be 16 miles per gallon, so it would meet this limit.
So, does that mean we need to buy all four vehicles, or just one is fine?
No, any, any vehicle that we're replacing that's non-exempt on our vehicle list, which we've put together, we would have to look to purchase the type of model we're looking at. Having an MPG that's higher than what this EPA standard is, which is, they're very reasonable standards. There should be no issue with us obtaining a vehicle that meets that standard. There is a fallback that if a, if a vehicle of the type we need is not available with the MPG that the standard calls for, then we are not obligated to purchase a vehicle that is difficult for us.
And you said there were four that we have to look at. Do we have like a year or how much time before we have to replace those, and what are those four?
The pickup truck that is affected for DPW is one that we're going to be asking voters to approve at the October 16th meeting. Uh huh. And the three vehicles for the school, um, those were purchased, I believe, within the past two years, and I think they have a useful life of five to seven years, so it'll be a number of years before we have to worry about replacing them.
Okay, so, okay, so we're not talking in another year or so that we're going to have to replace many other vehicles?
No, it's really just one vehicle that we're looking at, and that is actually on the warrant for the October 16th.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion?
A little off of the vehicle topic. You mentioned we're, we're going to be looking for the stretch code, holdover from the fifth meeting. I'm assuming they're aware of that, and the design is going to include the stretch code?
Yep, it's, um, it would be, would incorporate whatever we'd be doing anyways under the new construction, but yes, we will provide that to the architect if it's approved at town meeting. It's basically just saying that, um, it, it requires a, a certain level of efficiency within a building, so that when you're planning your HVAC, when you're planning your insulation, building envelope, you're looking to maximize the efficiency. The only additional thing above what we would normally do in a, in any municipal building project is that it now has to be, um, it has to be inspected to make sure that it meets the necessary efficiencies. So that will add some small cost to any construction project. For residential property, it's estimated to be around $1,500, but for residential projects, there's a rebate plan that homeowners can apply for to get that money back.
Thank you.
And Congressman Bois?
Can you comment?
All right, motion to close.
So, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any motion to vote?
Make the motion to adopt the fuel-efficient vehicle policy?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, uh, Madam President?
I'm here to get your approval for our paving for our streets this year. And I have proposed four sections. First one would be Thomas Street, roughly from the bridge over the water at the causeway up to the church at the top of the hill on the right. Then it would be Prospect Street from Franklin Street up to the golf course, and then jumping over again on Prospect Street from the 190 overpass up to Woodland, where we left off last year, and then from, on Woodland Street from Prospect underneath the 190 bridge again up to just past that first, where on the right there's a nice paving joint where the paving is good again. And those, those four sections this year.
Is it not just a overlay, right?
Excuse me?
Just a overlay.
No, it would be milling, pave. It's really bad on Thomas Street. It's kind of bad up Prospect at Franklin. I get a lot of complaints about that area. You've seen it, so.
Yeah, in regards to that, so this, when will this be started?
Probably, uh, first two weeks of October. It's only a four-day project.
For the Prospect?
For the whole thing.
Okay.
Two days milling, two days paving.
So, the project on the square where we reduce lanes, go one way from then?
Yeah, I plan on doing that too, but then we'll, we'll do that in-house. We're just going to, you're talking about that Woodland?
Yeah, Prospect.
Yeah, we're just going to excavate whatever, the asphalt out of there, put a berm in, and lumen seed it.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that people understand this doesn't have any impact on Newton Street?
No.
That's still going forward?
Oh, yes, that's starting next Monday.
Next Monday? I think it's just important for our viewers.
Yeah?
That's still going forward?
Oh, yeah. I'll be sending out a reverse 911 to the Newton Street, Prospect, and Goodell people tomorrow to let them know the dates, times, the detours, and all that.
It's going to be, 140 is going to be, there is a construction.
That's on the other side of town, yeah.
Can we send something out about that again?
Yeah, I'm going to look into that. I've got, actually, I sent a message over.
That's going to be closed.
See what the story is on that, where the detail is on that, so we're going to, we talked about that last night.
Eight thirty to four, so.
Yep, so we're getting details on that. That's going to go out. There'll be another posting put on the website, and there'll be a blast out on our listserv so that we can give people updated information on the Route 140 project.
Are you planning on putting a sign at the top of Goodell coming from Colton, so people don't get all the way down to Goodell and try and take Newton, so they'll take Lee Street, or what do you put your thought on that? Because there's a lot of people coming.
Yeah, that's what we'll have to do, because there's nothing else, there's nothing else in Goodell to go, so it would have to be Lee Street.
Just because that does get a fair amount of traffic.
We've talked about using the electronic signboard that the.
Or we could have, they could go past Newton and take Central.
We're just asking what your, your plan was.
We'll probably, we'll have them go past Newton and take Central, because I, do you think a lot of people come down Goodell? Do you live on Goodell?
Tons of people go up and go that way.
So if I close Goodell, you don't think that'd be a problem? If I close it at the top and send them down Lee Street?
I, I don't know, I would.
Maybe you're, you're the better one.
Okay, well, we'll look at it. I'll ask the police chief what he thinks.
But there is a lot, that's a big cut for Colton, constantly, trucks and cars.
Okay.
Any discussion?
What is this bigger?
Oh, it's just that, I was looking, I had extra time, and I was looking at it, and we are milling and paving, and I, the driveway aprons are always an issue, but when you're milling and paving, it's usually not. I just put a lot of the stuff in case, catchphrase rises, I shouldn't need many, because we're milling and paving, and the hay bale silt fans and wattles, that stuff is standard, and then I had the, I didn't have the police on the first one either.
Right, but I'm looking at a, a request of 200,000 here, and this is 267.
I think it was 230.
263.
Well, it's, whatever I don't use, I'll send back, but I just don't want to have to go back, that's all. And also on the milling, I mean, on the paving itself, if, I beefed that up a little bit too, because when you pave an inch and a half, say in the middle of the road as you're going, you've got the ruts, so you're going to use up a little more than an inch and a half. I just want to make sure I didn't run, run short.
My question is, I have a document here that's got four streets, and it says requesting 200,000 from Chapter 90. I have this document that says 263,410.
The one you have is, when I submitted, it has 212. And then I, that's the new one. Yeah, it said 200, and I don't know what the old one said, but I, I was, I was requesting 225 or 230, I thought. Does it say at the bottom?
The one I have, the one we have in our package.
It's 200.
I'm requesting 200,000.
Okay.
That was the early estimate, perhaps?
I can't explain why it's this way. Milling is the same.
So this one says I am requesting 263, Chapter 90.
Yeah, but that includes the extra stuff that's on there. This is just basically.
This is where we got to go, 263.
Like I said, whatever I don't use.
Question on that, you have 10 days for the police at $43, should that be hours for the unit?
Well, two cops, five hundred, actually, just in case you go over.
Right, but the cops don't make 43 bucks a day. You have, you have two, you have 430.
Yeah, it should be hours.
Yeah, so.
That's going to be a little higher.
Right. Okay.
Is that yours? Yeah, that one just included, just the missing page.
So just to clarify, Butch, what you're asking is that the Board approve a Chapter 90 request for the 263,410 dollars?
Right.
That's a high estimate, so that makes sure that he has all the money needed to finish these projects as listed.
Whatever I don't use, we'll go right back in the Chapter 90.
And someone's going to ask, how much is that going to leave us?
How much money? Let's see.
I was going to ask, I was going to ask.
I expected that question. It'll leave us about 176, 177,000, plus whatever we get next year, another, another. Usually we get around 260, 270.
Yeah, just in the future on these, if we can just always get what's left on everything.
Oh, I'm jealous.
Just so they let us, because we always want to know.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So it's 170, 170 something left?
This year.
Before next year.
Yeah, before we get our new allotment.
After the 263.
I'll make motion to approve 263,410 for the aforementioned streets.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I have one more quick one.
Okay.
I want to do the townwide line painting this year. I didn't do it last year. Most towns do it every year. I get an estimate around 8800, so I'm requesting 10,000 to do the whole town line painting.
And that would be Chapter 90 fund requested, similar to what you just did for the paving?
That's, all the streets that have lines on them now will be refreshed.
How much was it?
I got one for 8800 so far, first quote, so I'm, I'm sure I won't go over that one. He's not much over that, so I'm just asking for 10, just to cover myself for police details.
I'll make motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. That's it, that's all I got.
All right. Senate Vote to approve, close, and sign one to the October 16th semi-annual town meeting.
Do you want me to just walk through quickly on the articles again?
Do you have the articles?
The articles are in front of you. The art, the latest version of the warrant and the article list is in front of you. Was what I sent to you a few days ago, the email?
So we're going to vote on, voting, we have to add them, or they're already all there?
We need to have you vote to approve to add these article, to have, actually place these articles on the warrant, and then you'll, you'll sign the warrant sheet. So we're going to make sure that you're comfortable with having each of these articles be on the final version of the warrant. So if you want to just quickly go through them, should take just a few minutes.
We vote each one separately? We usually vote each one.
That's up to you.
Yeah, that's fine, just, okay.
Okay, Article 1 is to hear any reports of officers and committees.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article 2 is authorization to pay any bills from prior year fiscal years, which we have not identified any yet.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article 3 is to do some mid-year budget adjustments of the FY '18 budget. We, we know that there's three categories. The cable budget needs a, needs a minor adjustment, cemetery wages need a minor adjustment, and the Conservation Commission wages need a minor adjustment.
Second.
All in favor?
A question, um, will we vote the night of to actually approve?
You'll be approving the motions at the October 4th meeting.
Because that, that sometimes, that might change.
Right. I mean, this is what, this is what the accountant and I think are the numbers that we're aware of, but something else may come up if some invoice comes through that we weren't aware of. Okay, Article 4.
We've had a portion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Article 4 is a article recommended by our bond council, in that if we need to adopt a state statute to allow us to take an, any premium that we've received from a bond, that we can actually apply those dollars to the project cost itself. Otherwise, it would have to just go toward the, you know, bond coverage. But this allows us to take any amount left over to put actually toward the project cost itself.
So, second.
All in favor?
Article 5 is to authorize, authorize purchase of a replacement ambulance to replace ambulance two for 295,000, and this is at no cost to taxpayers. We would be totally using existing funds within the ambulance receipts reserve account.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article 6 is to vote to authorize borrowing of funds to purchase a replacement fire truck to replace the 25-year-old engine three, 575,000. The principal and interest payments on this five-year ban would basically just replace the existing in, principal and interest payments that we have been paying for an older street project. So the street project principal and interest will come off the books, and this will replace it. There'll be no additional taxes to the, to the taxpayers. Some moved?
Second.
So.
This is inside two and a half, correct?
It says, yes. So this only requires a town meeting vote?
So, because we're trade, it doesn't need to go to a ballot and to things like that, because?
Because we're not excluding the debt from the Prop 2 and a half limits. It's inside the limit, it's all part of what's built into our budget.
So that other project was the same, that's why you're saying the money.
Same structure and almost identical dollars.
Unlike when we did buildings, we needed to have a vote.
We needed to go outside of it, because we couldn't support the principal and interest payments on those large construction projects within the budget. So we had to do it outside of Prop 2 and a half.
Okay.
Are they, are they trading in the one, the truck? So this one is a part of it last, or do you know?
Um, I don't have that information in front of me, but we'll have it ready for our next meeting.
When I was on the CIB, we talked about trading in ambulances and fire trucks.
All in favor?
I think they do trade them in, but, you know, it's a half a million dollar truck, they'll get 20,000. It's, it's de minimis, whatever the amount that they get is.
It may be that it would be better for us to auction it off, or whatever.
So. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Article 7 is to purchase the replacement four-wheel-drive pickup truck with plow and equipment for the DPW, as we were talking about earlier, and that amount, I believe, is 42,000.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article 8 is authorization for the parks improvements, which is the resurfacing of the tennis courts and basketball courts at Goodell Park for 35,000. So, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Article 9 is a vote to appropriate community preservation funds in the amount of 25,000 for, to pay for affordable housing services.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Article 10 is to expend receipts reserved from the cable TV program to use to pay for equipment and system upgrades for the cable TV station. Some moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Have you had a dollar on that?
Not yet. The PEG Board is meeting on October 5th. Article 11 is to.
Aye.
Article 11 is to authorize expending funds from the Super Enterprise Fund to cover year one of the I&amp;I study activity, like we were talking about at our last meeting.
Second, how much is that?
It's 31,000, but we'll be adding a cushion to it to start building the fund for potential repairs that may need to be done with each year.
All in favor?
Article 12 is to request use of free cash to pay for the labor for the installation in the donated phone system for the library. Some moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Article 13 is to authorize transfer of available funds into the stabilization fund. The amount is to be determined, but I did receive some great news today from the accountant that it looks like our estimated certified free cash will be in the range of about 700,000.
Wow!
Yeah, so we will have money available to put into both stabilization and capital.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
And then 14 is to authorize transferring any available free cash or other available funds into the capital investment fund.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Article 15 is an article asking voters to approve amendment to the personnel bylaw to allow that it be the Personnel Board who approves any changes to the assignment of positions within the grade schedule. Some moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Article 16 is also from Personnel Board to ask that we amend the personnel bylaw to change the way that overtime hours are accrued or used for weekend hours that occur during a work week in which a recognized holiday falls.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
So this would be if their regular scheduled day is on a weekend?
It would be if they are required to work whatever reason due to their position. If they are required to work a weekend hours within the same work week that a holiday falls. So Labor Day occurred recently, that's a Monday holiday. If they were required to work the Saturday within that same work week, they, the Personnel Board is looking to have the ability to allow that person to still be able to accrue overtime, because it, currently the way it reads is that they have to work 40 hours before being eligible to achieve overtime.
They're getting credit for eight hours for the holiday.
Right.
So with this, how, how many people does this affect?
Not many at all, because most of the situations where this occurs is for union positions, and those are directed by contracts, so this would be a small handful of non-union people.
It probably doesn't happen very often, though, does it?
It would be, the majority of instances where this occurs are for the cemetery workers.
Mr. Chairman, so we're paying them for the holiday, but then if they, at that point, if they work 32 hours, or let's say 36 hours, they're going to get paid overtime plus the holiday, for the difference?
Plus they would get overtime for the hours worked on the weekend. And the reason why this is being put forward is that the Cemetery Commission brought this forward to the Personnel Board, because most of the weekends, they work. And so they, you know, the, when they are working, expected to work weekends, especially long weekends where there's holidays, they're not, you know, they are not able to take full advantage of it. So they're looking to try to have the ability to also earn overtime on those hours for those Saturdays or Sundays that they may have a burial or what have they.
Does that standard throughout different towns?
Usually I've seen cemetery workers be part of a union, so it's handled under a different provision.
Okay, thank you.
Do we go to motion?
Yeah.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Then we have Article 17, which is the stretch code that we were talking about earlier under the Green Communities. This would be asking voters to amend the general bylaws to add a new Article 39, the Stretch Energy Code.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And just a note, we'll be having a presentation on that at our next meeting, October 4th. Article 18 is authorization to amend the general bylaws to add a new Article 49, excuse, 39, um, excuse me, 40, for, for non-medical marijuana sales and, and facilities. And this is the, the, um, request that we've received from the voters that asked that we put this on the next available warrant. It's not a citizen's petition, it was just a request that you all had received several months back. You may recall the individual who brought the article forward.
So moved? Second.
Any discussion?
I don't think we should have this in our warrant. It's a legal product, it, it's mandated by state law, it's controlled by state law. We're telling adults they can't buy illegal product. I spoke out against. You changing the cigarette age from 18 to 21 for the same reason, either you're an adult or you're not an adult. The voters spoke, made this a legal product, now we're turning around and saying, we don't care what you said, and we're going to make it illegal in our town. And I, I, I'm speaking out against it now, and if you guys disagree, I'll speak out against it at town meeting. I mean, this, this shouldn't be on here.
I agree. I agree with Mr. Crowell.
Do you want to let the people decide that?
I, I think the people already have decided it. They decided that they, it was put to a ballot, and the answer was yes, we want this to be a legal product.
So what exactly will this do?
This would prevent the sales of recreational marijuana in our town.
I, I agree with Mr. Hamley. I think we should let the voters, the town meeting voters decide. So I think the article should stay on.
Can we make a motion for the other?
We already did motion.
We already had a motion.
Okay, all right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote?
No.
I think other towns are doing this by ballot, right?
There are different mechanisms on which you do this. If we move ahead with this article, according to Town Council, we would also have to have another vote at our, either our special town meeting or in the spring, to also have a, an article that deals with amending the zoning, so that it's, as she puts it, a belts and suspenders mechanism to make sure that we're fully covered. Other communities have voted the referendum and are doing just the, the general bylaw. Then we have Article 18, which is.
That's a mispronounced, it should say 90.
Thank you. Article 19, to amend the off-street parking section of the zoning bylaw to reduce the gross vehicle weight of commercially licensed vehicles that are allowed to park overnight in a residential neighborhood.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then Article 20 is the authorization to amend the signs and billboard section of the zoning bylaw to remove the limitation that says only text messages can be displayed on digital display signs.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's the warrant.
All right, we go to, uh, considered information mailer, signing information mailer for the town, is it bigger than property, it's in the packet, just the last week?
I like the links, but I'm gonna keep, yeah, it's gonna be a. Can we add in DPW's listing? If there is a fire hydrant, you know, in front of your house, shovel it out?
There's room on there to...
I, I just scanned it briefly. Is it on there already?
There was, there was mention of the fire hydrants in there.
I, I, like I said, I just, I scanned, there was nine to 10 things and I just scanned them briefly. That's my pet peeve for the...
Well, we had talked about that at one of our meetings.
It's a good idea.
Right. I think when we were talking about sidewalks, we brought that up.
I don't, I, unless I'm listening, I don't see it. It says our fire department is looking, needs residents today to volunteer in the fire services. Oh, do not, residents can... Oh, it's inside, it's inside the...
It is not...
We can make it more obvious.
Like I said, I just scanned through and I didn't...
There's one through nine here of listings.
Maybe we can put a bullet or somewhere on the back of the page, something like that.
Yeah.